Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on December 11th, 2018. You would you call the roll?
Johnlin Herr.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsada.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader. Mr. Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Ben Walker is going to lead the invocation and Councilmember Tom Jones is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
God, thank you for being in the room tonight. And one of the things, Father, that you are so good at is promising that no matter what we go through overwhelming trouble, it says in your word will come. But yet, God, you say we have overwhelming victory. And Father, I just pray that we would be walking in overwhelming victory tonight. All the work and things that these men and women do, God, you see it. So thank you so much, Father, for the ones that you've put here, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Melvin?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes seven zero. Tonight, under rewards and presentations, we have two items, and we'll start with the Chief Police, Chief Austin.
Mr. Mayor, council members, it's my honor this evening to present Officer Shane Alexander with the Police Medal. And I have a letter, a brief letter, that I want to read here about the circumstances behind this. On November 13th of this year, Officer Alexander was off duty and was taking his children to school, traveling west on 21st Street, near 167th Street West. Officer Alexander came upon two vehicles in the ditch which had been involved in a severe crash that had just occurred in front of him. Officer Alexander called 911 and notified them of the accident. He provided the 911 dispatcher with the information regarding injuries, and he found that both drivers were unresponsive. A short time later, a Sedgwick County Sheriff's Deputy arrived on scene, and together they determined that the priority patient was the juvenile male driver who was in a pickup truck. Deputy Lord with the Sheriff's Office and Officer Alexander pried open the door of the truck and extricated the young man from the vehicle. Officer Alexander found that the driver was not breathing and had no pulse. The deputy went to his patrol vehicle to locate a CPR mask and was not able to find one. Officer Alexander began CPR and continued CPR for several minutes until EMS arrived to continue life-saving measures. Unfortunately, the young man involved in the crash, who was a Goddard High School student, did not survive the accident because his injuries were so severe. Although Officer Alexander was off duty and had his own small children with him, he did not hesitate to jump into action and try to save the young driver's life. It's my distinct honor to award Officer Shane Alexander the Police Medal for demonstrating heroism and selfless service to others.
The next item on the agenda is what I'll call our First Annual Gingerbread House Competition. Ben, I'll let you do the presentation on this.
Sure. We appreciate the idea from one of our young citizens here in town to make this event a reality, and then want to say thank you to the City of Park City, to the Park City Pride, and to the Park City Library for their support in this. You have up here at the front those that have participated. They were divided into two categories, those three years old to second grade, and then third grade to sixth grade, seventh grade. These are the participants up there. They've been chosen here by some on our council, and so today I'd like to make our award. I'm going to come down there because I didn't look at the name on the one, so.
And then do you have a...
The winner of the two, the three-year-old, the second grade, is Braden Brimmerman, age seven, here. So we will be contacting him to get his... The winner of the third grade, who's in the seventh grade, is Miss Layla White, and that is this one here. And so she is our winner, and I believe she is here tonight. If you want to come up here, all those hands come up here and present with this certificate for winning the older.
Ben? Could you give a quick... All right. Thank you very much, and we thank everybody that participated, and Jan, we appreciate everything with pride, too. That brings us to public forum. We have one person signed up this evening. I apologize, I don't see your last name here, but Richard, come on up and introduce yourself for us.
Richard Stather, the Wind Creek Development. Before I start, I just noticed that there are eight, one, two, three, no, nine, never mind. I was thinking the same number of gingerbread houses as our council members, and I thought that may have explained the four because I saw one of you bringing in. Just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Richard Stather. My wife and I moved to Park City about six months ago. Yesterday, I turned in the little sheet for volunteering for various committees and things like that, or a wastewater thing like that, and I just wanted to give all of you a chance to see a face, to put with the name when you see it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. That was all for public forum this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports, and we'll start with our City Administrator, Jack Woodson. Jack?
Thank you. I want to tell you a few things. I don't expect any action from you tonight at all. This is things that you need to be thinking about in the future. I'll start off with one that many of you were here when the subject first came up, and that's filling in the ditches. I've had several requests of people wanting to fill in their ditches in front of their houses, and I asked them to wait until the council has an in-depth thought process going into it as to whether standards need to be in place and whatever. Berryhill has a lot of things up in that area where people have done to their ditches and whatever, but we're getting another area that's really getting interested in it. Now, we had discussed with this group of people a few years ago, and at least one person thought he got an okay from the council that evening to go ahead and fill his ditch. And when he did that, a lot of other people said, "Well, hey, we can do that now." And I said, "Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. We need to look at this and have some kind of standard of how we're going to do it because we don't want big drainage problems." So anyway, start thinking about that, that's something that maybe in the future you want to look at. I'd need to pull together some things that you could use or look at and determine to do that in the future. Since it's winter time, I don't think we have worried about them pushing forward on it, but I've had four or five people in a certain area ask about it. I received a project number from KDOT. You think, "Well, what's the big deal?" Well, this is on our project from Broadway to the Valley Center Flood Patrol on 61st Street. WAMPO Board approved our grant. KDOT, by giving us this number, has given us the go-ahead to proceed and move forward. On our bridge, this is another thing that you need to be thinking about. KDOT has changed the way that they're going to be doing things. Originally, well, for many years, KDOT would upfront the grant money to pay the contractor and handle all the payments and all that. Well, that's getting ready to change. They're going to want us to front the money, and then later, after the project's done, then they will pay us, okay? That's going to probably require us to get some temporary note money, just like we do with our regular street projects, until we know what the final number is, and then we can go to geo bond issue. That's going to come and start hitting us, I think, here in May with the bridge project. Now, talking about the bridge project, I got a call from KDOT. They changed some things on inspector selection. Last time we did this on 53rd, they gave us a list of qualified inspectors that have met their requirements and everything, and all we had to do is pick one off the list, they were fine with it, negotiate a contract, and away we go. Now, they changed it. Now, we have to do, send out an RFP to different engineering companies and develop a committee, and that's where you folks will come into play here in the future. Come up with a committee of at least three council members to review the RFPs. Now, we have a couple options. We can send out the RFP, or KDOT would be glad to send out the RFP. I'd recommend to let them do it, okay? So that way, if they foul up or do something wrong or whatever, it's on them, it's not going to be on us. But anyway, be thinking about that if you'd like to sit on that committee or whatever. Here again, this is going to be a future thing that you need to be thinking about. A couple of other things that are probably in a little longer term that needs to be looked at, and that's our zoning regulations. There's a lot of issues with gravel and sizes of garages and parking and things like that that we probably need to really, and RV particularly, that we probably need to look at and look at possibility of changing and updating. Also, a little work probably needs to be done to the subdivision regulations. So basically, that's my report. If you've got any questions, I'll be more glad to answer them. I didn't give you any good stuff, I don't think, but some things to be thinking about.
How's the progress on our maintenance facility?
Okay, they got the slab poured, and they got the site fairly well graded. They got the slab poured, they got the plumbing in. A lot of the building is onsite, which is encouraging, and so I think they might meet their end of January or February date on the building, hopefully.
Ben, does anybody have any questions for Jack? Not seeing any, thank you, Jack. We'll move on to our Director of Public Works, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This week, we had, did a lot of work in Reclaim Park, starting with the Parks Department. They did a few tree removals, did dead tree removals and some trimming. Also installed a memorial bench north of the tennis courts. Street Department, we replaced a few faulty crosswalks, buttons, they were sticking and they were lights to go on and off, so we replaced those. Got our grader back from maintenance, so we did some dirt work and some gravel road maintenance on 69th Street. And we also replaced some numerous regulatory street signs citywide. The Water and Sewer Department, they yard repaired, tree trimmings around the booster pump stations, and we installed two brand-new residential service connections, and they also started the process of repairing numerous fire hydrants citywide.
Does anybody have any questions? Not seeing any, thank you. Just want to point out again real quick, just new housing permits through the end of November, ended at 82 for the year, and that is 40 over the previous year and 50 over the year before that, so we're starting to see some strong growth in the housing. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Ben?
I just have one question real quick on it, and on the...
On the consent agenda, we can't...
Yes.
We should have pulled something before if there was a question.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. And Melvin?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes seven zero. Now, I ask the council for a short, five-minute recess, so we can break and come back as the Park City, Kansas land bank. Is there a motion? John?
I'll move.
And Brandy?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. We're reconvenienced as the City of Park City Council at 7:20 PM, and from our short recess, and we'll move to Item A, which is consider the acceptance of a bid on 2019 AGO bond issue. John has?
We had already, we've seen, we also had this tonight, Garth coming, with... What we're going to do tonight, we're only going with three items, and handing out two now, and Garth will come up and do the important things of accepting, accepting, rejecting Anyway, we had a notice of bond sale that was published locally and in the Kansas Register a couple Thursdays ago. This morning bids were due at 10 o'clock at our office. You'll see that we had two bids received. The first bid from DA Davidson for $125,380 interest cost. The other's Commerce Bank, $127,075, a bid differential of less than $2,000, so that shows you where the market is for a bond issue this size. Typically, on your debt, we'll see more bids than this, but a 15-year AGO at $350,000 is kind of difficult to get interest in that. Actually, it's harder to sell than a $10 million bond issue, so. Anyway, the next page that you'll see is the copy of the winning bid. Then Garth comes up, he's going to ask either accept or reject that bid, and then pass an ordinance and bond resolution. Now, you'll see on this bid, it says premium, $7,896.10. Does everybody see that on the winning bid form? That's the premium, they're charging you a higher interest rate, but they're paying you a premium. Unless you want a half-hour dissertation on why people do that, we'll just go like, "Oh, okay." But what it allows us to do, this was a $300,000 bond issue, but with the premium, you'll see on the last page, we were able to reduce the bond issue size to 342,000. So the premium replaced the principal amount of proceeds, and everything seems to net out to the same. The page that I have here in front of you, the last page, is an amended bid to adjust the bond issue size down to take in consideration for the premium. Before Garth comes up, any questions about the bidding process or bonds themselves?
Do you have any questions for John? Not seeing any.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As usual, John did a very good job explaining all this, so my job is fairly easy. Based on the results of that sale that John just kind of walked everybody through, in essence, there's three actions for the governing body to take. The first of the three would be to make a motion and a second, vote on the acceptance of the best bid. In this case, it was from DA Davidson, an investment bank out of Denver. The second step would be to, have a second, to pass the bond ordinance. The bond ordinance, as some of you may remember, is the legal document that authorizes the city to go ahead and issue and sell the geo bonds to the buyer. The third step would be to have a motion and second for the adoption of the bond resolution itself. That's the big 40-page document that has all of the kind of legal mumbo jumbo in it. It's got the final repayment terms, the interest rates, the principal amounts, how the bonds are going to be repaid, what those bond monies are going to be used for. All of that is set forth in this bond resolution. As John mentioned, with the results of that sale, overall, it was a good sale, and basically, the bonds will be repaid over a 15-year period. The money from these bonds is actually going to pay off a prior issued temporary note that the city issued back in 2016 in order to provide some interim construction financing for subdivision improvements. This is kind of the final step in this. With the sale of the bonds, the bonds pay that note off, and then the special assessments are levied against the property. Those specials match up with your bond payments, and they'll both last for 15 years, so then the theory is, as the money comes in from that, you use that to make your bond payments. So with all of that being said, are there any questions or any comments that anybody would like for me to answer?
Does anybody have any questions for John? Not seeing any. So the first item that we need to take care is the acceptance of the bids on the 2019 AGO bond issue. Is there a recommendation from the council? Ben?
Sure, I'd go ahead and make a motion that we accept the bid on the 2019 AGO bond issue.
From DA Davidson?
From DA Davidson, sorry, in Denver.
And can you finish just reading that statement? That the mayor and the city clerk be authorized...
Sorry, that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized and directed to execute the bid from selling bonds to the best bidder on the basis of the bid and the terms specified in the note of bond sale.
Okay. John?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes seven zero. And that brings us to Item B, which is consider the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the 2019 AGO bond, general obligation bonds. Garth has kind of covered that already for us?
Yes.
John?
I'll make a motion, we approve Item B for the issuance of the 2019A general obligation bond that provides for the issuance of Series 2019A, the City of Park City, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and the interests of said bonds as they become due, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and making certain covenants with respect thereto.
Bless you. Melvin?
I'll second.
Okay. D, would you give us the ordinance number? All right. We have a motion and a second. D, would you call the...
Johnlin Herr.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsada.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
And that passes seven zero. That brings us to Item P, which is consider a resolution prescribing the form and details and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of the 2019A geobligation bonds. Garth?
This is the third step in that process, where this is the document that has all of those kind of forms and details, final interest rate, repayment terms.
Ben?
Go ahead and make a motion here concerning this resolution prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation form for our bond Series 2019A of the City of Park City, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance number...
1051.
1051, 2018, of the issuer making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Brandy?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Did you have a resolution number? And would you call the roll?
Johnlin Herr.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsada.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
And that resolution passes seven zero. Thank you, Garth.
Very much.
Thank you, John.
You all, Mr. Mayor, for this...
That brings us to Item D, which is considering an extension of the home buyers incentive program. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the end of December of the year, we decide whether to extend the incentive for the home buyers, the incentive program, and make any changes as the council's teams needs to be made. Since we are not having our, this is our last meeting in December, I ask that you make a decision on this issue this evening as to whether to continue the current incentive program. Briefly, what that is, is we give new home buyers, once they get a occupancy permit, $2,500, the builder must contribute $3,000 of his money to closing costs for that buyer, and that's currently our program.
Ben, does anybody have any questions for Jack? Okay, we have one person signed up to speak on this item. Katie Brown?
Thank you all for your time this evening. My name is Katie Brown, and I'm a Realtor with the Carnehan Group at YG N. I'm the new Realtor in the Saddlebrook community, and I just wanted to take a moment and give you a quick update on what's happening out there. In the last 15 months, we have had nine sold and pending homes. We've got several in the ground right now that are under construction. That leaves us with 13 available lots, but the exciting news is that we have two models that will be open for the spring parade of homes. So there's a lot going on out there. We've replaced our billboard, we have plans to take care of the other ones that are out there, but the main billboard in the entryway, a fresh new look. We've created a website to draw buyers to the community, and we're in a desirable price range, according to the WSU annual market forecast, that $230,000 to $250,000 price range is really where buyers are looking. The benefit that I've seen with the incentive, I know that Bel Air had the same tax incentive or a similar tax incentive, and it expired, and so I have seen a draw toward the Park City area, and we have had custom builds. We have one going on right now, as a matter of fact, that chose our community because of this tax incentive, so that's, it's tremendously exciting with the incentive. So that's, it's tremendously exciting with the incentive and the fresh marketing and the fresh look and the possibility of these model homes. So when buyers are out and they're browsing on a Sunday, they have somewhere to stop and be greeted and have their questions answered. So we're very excited for that. And I just wanted to give you an update. I don't know about the rest of Park City, but I can say that in the Saddle Brook addition, great things are happening. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We typically have hung on to this program, and we always punt it out for another twelve months. And we've budgeted for the 2019 budget with some adjustments that we made earlier in the year. We can see from our housing permits, new homes built, how that number continues to increase, and I would recommend to the council that you go ahead and approve that through the 2019. Ben?
Sure, just based on the housing numbers there and knowing that some of ours around the community are not extending it, I think it's a great incentive to bring people to Park City there. So I would make a motion that we approve the extension of the home buyers incentive program here for 2019.
Okay, Tom?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item E, which is consider a three percent salary increase for city employees per the 2019 budget. As you all remembered, when we walked through the budget process, that was one of the things that we tried to hold to was to make sure that we can allow for a three percent increase this year for our employees. I just want to point out that, you know, we did a lot of things over the last eighteen months to try to get us where we should be. We've budgeted for these funds, and I think we need to go ahead and approve doing that three percent salary increase. And once again, remember that we are in a highly competitive employment market, and we want to keep our edge. Brandy?
Will you remind me, was this an across-the-board three percent? Yeah. With that, I'll make a motion to approve a three percent salary increase for city employees for the 2019 adopted budget effective the first full pay period in January 2019.
George?
I'll second that.
Okay, Melvin?
I had a question. That don't include the council, right?
Don't include what?
The council, the pay raises.
No, we do not include the council. Tom?
I just have one question. Clarification is, it's just a flat three percent for everybody? There's no takeaways or adds or anything?
Okay. It would be based off performance. If a person has an underperforming evaluation, then they would not get a three percent raise.
Well, that's my question, because the way it sounded is everybody's going to get one, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, you don't pass out bonuses or pay raises if people are underperforming. And that would be consistent with what we've been doing in the past. They're based off performance evaluations if they earn the three percent.
I was just clarifying.
Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item F, which is consider the 2018-2028 Comprehensive Development Plan for the City of Park City, Kansas. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The comprehensive development plan by state requirements needs to be done and also reviewed on a yearly basis, which is an ongoing process, even though this is a ten-year plan. It can be updated anytime within that ten years. It's not a fixed issue. The council either approves or can send it back to the planning commission if they don't like it to be relooked at. I think there is a requirement on the total number of votes to do that. Is that right, Doug? I think they have to send it back. You have to have three quarters, is it, or?
No, that's not correct. There are three choices. You can approve it. You can make changes to it and end it. That requires a two-thirds vote. Or you can vote to send it back and with some instructions on, see address the planning commission.
Thank you, Doug. Does anybody have any questions for Doug or Jack?
Tom? I just have one, and I noticed that there is an aggressive population growth by 2020. And I just wonder where they come up with those numbers, because we had a setback several years ago. We've never really recovered from that.
Census Bureau, that's where those numbers come from.
Okay.
Sedgwick County was doing some projections, but I felt it'd be safer to use the US Census. So that's what I used.
Okay, anybody else? Ben?
Sure, I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the comprehensive development plan here and ordinance approving the comprehensive development plan for Park City, Kansas, area 2018 to 2028.
And Tom?
I'll second that.
Do we have the ordinance?
One zero five two dash two thousand eighteen.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. D, would you call the roll?
John Lanahan?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsetta?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
And that ordinance passes seven zero. And that brings us to item G, which is consider a payout of vacation hours in excess of the maximum carryover for law enforcement employees. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your consideration for this action this evening. This is consistent with the requests that we've had over the past several years. The council has been kept informed of our staffing, in particular, our staffing shortage that we have in our police. As a result of that, we have officers who will request for vacation, and then they are brought back in because of the shortage. As a result of that, they are not able to use their allotted vacation time. So this evening, we're asking that you consider paying out the vacation time that they would lose, because our policy states that anything in excess of two hundred and eight hours, it will not carry over to the next year. So our request this evening is for five individuals that were not able to utilize their vacation time. And the amount is three thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. So we're asking that these officers are paid for their vacation time.
Ben?
Sure, I want to, first off, just say thank you to our police department. They're so vital to our community, and even as we saw during the awards tonight, how they respond courageously even when off duty. And we have, there's a famous saying, "Everything rises and falls on leadership." And so to our chief, I want to say thank you to our officers, Capps, Wolf, Goodall, Green, McCall, Shields, Diaz, Langford, Tibbetts, Alexander, Purdue, Haas, Palmer. Thank you for all that you do in serving our community, and so I would gladly make a motion here that we approve the payout of vacation hours for four law enforcement, you said five? Okay, five law enforcement officers, employees with balances in excess of the two hundred and eight hour minute maximum carryover, as provided for in the City of Park City personnel policy at an estimated cost of three thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-six cents from the police salaries.
Okay, Brandy?
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead.
Dana, do you happen to know, besides the police department, what, how many other employees there were that did not use other vacation?
I'm only familiar with one. That's all I had.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero.
As always, thank you for your support of staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
That brings us to item H, which is consider invoices for emergency medical services provided to individuals while in police custody. Doug, chief, which one you want to go?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor and council, this is an action that's required because of some legislation that was passed about ten years ago by the Kansas Legislature that I would put in the category of an unfunded mandate. There was a change in the law. Came an obligation of law enforcement agencies when they took persons into custody who required medical treatment or care before they could be placed in actual custody in the jail. The law changed to put that obligation on the sponsoring law enforcement agency, the county, the city, the various cities. In those ten years, I've been here and the chief's been here for about half of that period of time. We've had several of bills sent to us, but we've never before had any follow-up where we were obligated to pay. At the end of this year, we are holding two rather substantial bills from Via Christi Hospitals arising out of circumstances in which our police department had to take somebody into custody and had no choice to keep them in custody because of outstanding warrants issued by the parole board in one case, and maybe the courts in another. And so they had to take those, both of those people with significant medical issues to Via Christi for treatment. One of the bills is a face amount of eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. The other is forty-six thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. Part of this unfunded mandate and legislation was that the carrot that they gave when they put this obligation on municipalities was, you have to pay if the other person doesn't have insurance. And in this case, we really have no proof right now that either of these, they're both males, either of these men didn't have insurance. Pretty good chance that that's a likely thing to be proved down the road. But the second thing was that the obligation also wasn't for the face amount of the medical bill. And as most of us know now, over the last several years, when you go to the hospital and get a medical statement of what you owe, what your insurance company pays is always a lot less than that. And in this case, cities are only obligated to pay at the Medicaid rate. Now, the Medicaid rate is something that is very difficult to figure out, apparently. I've had discussions with attorneys for the City of Wichita, and the chief has had some discussions with chiefs of cities in this area about how they handle this. And so what we're looking at is estimation of about twenty-five percent. It's really close, and probably a little bit on the high side of what the ultimate Medicaid cost would be. So after all that explanation, what we're asking you to do tonight is, with funds available, I'll speak for the chief, and he can pop in if I get this wrong, but in his budget this year, he has funds available to encumber the fourteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents, which is twenty-five percent of the sum of those two bills. And then in the event that we are asked in the future, required in the future to pay these amounts, we'll have monies to do that that have been encumbered in this 2018 budget. I think there is at least a reasonable chance that this might never be paid, based on what's happened in the past and the fact that we would resist and make the hospital come forward and prove that these gentlemen didn't have insurance, and then come forward and prove what the Medicaid rate was. And I think both the chief and I are comfortable that would not exceed the fourteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Chief, do you have anything? Now Doug kind of nailed it.
No, I think Doug did a good job, but who am I to judge what turns the census, right? But the key issue for us is that we have the money available in our budget this year because we've been short of personnel. And hopefully, we hope that next year we won't be short of personnel, and so the money in that case wouldn't necessarily be available. We, there's really no way for us to budget for these kinds of circumstances, because as Doug explained, it's unusual. So that's the reason why we're asking to encumber the money out of this year's budget if possible.
Does anybody have any questions for either Doug or the chief? Ben?
Sure, I do have a question here on this, Doug. So just, so when our officers made the arrest, there were medical issues that arose, is that, and so we're required at that point to take them to a hospital if they have a med, I mean, what was, what's the determining factor as far as if we were on the hook for taking them to the hospital or not?
Well, the determining factor is if they're in custody and headed to the Sedgwick County Jail, they won't be accepted by the sheriff and the jail with medical issues. Sheriff's pretty smart, too. If they do that, then they're on the hook. So they require, and if I misstate this, Phil, jump in, but they require, before they're, these people are accepted into jail custody in Sedgwick County, that they be treated for any medical conditions.
This is absent, though, I mean, as far as any type of thing that would require paramedics. So I'm asking for, asking really.
Right, these are hospital bills. And the way the statute's written is if they're in our custody. And they specifically wrote the statute such a way that we can't turn and walk away. If they are actually in our custody, we can't turn and walk away and say, we, they're not, they never were in our custody in order to not pay the medical bills. We do everything we can to not take someone into custody to incur these bills. In one of these circumstances, I don't want to address, of course, all the details here, but there was a pursuit involved, and this person crashed. We believe very strongly had some severe pre-existing injuries, and went to the hospital, had warrants through the Department of Corrections as an abscond or felon. And we could not, because there's a warrant, we can't walk away. And the Department of Corrections eventually came hours later and withdrew their warrant. So they wouldn't be on the hook. Probably was the only reason, I'm sure, but it did leave us where they were in our custody, and we did eventually leave, but because they were in our custody when they got this care, we're on the hook for, according to the state statute.
I think that explains, basically, if something happens, and we're the responding party, and we have custody, anything that incurred during that time, we're responsible for.
If they're in our custody, yes.
Okay, thank you.
George?
These warrants that were issued, were they for crimes that was committed in our jurisdiction?
No.
And there are other agencies involved in this?
Yes. Unfortunately, the way the statute's written, it's all about what agency has them in custody and not about what jurisdiction issued a warrant, so.
Don't sound too fair, does it?
They didn't ask, in my opinion.
It's another way the state got to us. This would give you some heartburn. John?
I really don't have a lot of choice. I'll make a motion that we authorize the payment of not to exceed twenty-five percent of the invoice amounts on the two Via Christi Hospital invoices, with total payment not to exceed fourteen thousand four hundred and twelve fifty-nine in the event that appropriate claims are filed by the hospital for collection of the costs for such medical services.
Brandy?
Second.
Tom?
I just have one comment, and this is from the time we, while they're in our custody, we're responsible. I've seen the sheriff's bill, and it's significant. So they're trying to push it back. The state's trying to help the counties, I think, so.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes seven zero. Next item on the attendance, item I, which is consider a resolution to find the boundaries of the City of Park City, Kansas, as of December thirty-first, 2018. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year, we have to do this. It's a state requirement that we must report our boundary. The only changes from last year is fifty-two acres that we annexed of Lou Ribella's on sixty-first, north side of Sixty-first Street, west and adjacent to the Wichita Valley Center flood control, and one small lot at Sixty-ninth Street on the south side across from his Lou Ribella's industrial park there. Those are the only two properties that we added to our boundary.
Okay, does anybody got any questions for Jack? No? And Ben?
Sure, I'd make a motion that we approve a resolution delineating the boundaries of the City of Park City, Kansas, as of December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
Tom?
Second.
John, did you have any additional comments?
I was just going to get the resolution number that should be on that.
Resolution number one zero one six dash two thousand eighteen.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. D, would you call the roll? Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herron?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Randy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
That resolution passes, seven zero. That brings us to item J, which is considered reappointment of the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority, Position Three at Large. Currently, Councilmember Kerr serves in that capacity. He also serves as the treasurer for the board and is doing an outstanding job. I would ask that the council reappoint him for a new term. Tom?
I would make a motion to reappoint Councilmember Melvin Kerr to serve as a Position Three at Large to the city, or Chisholm Creek Utility Authority.
And Jordan?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, seven zero. If you notice, I didn't give you the option to speak, so you're getting put on there anyway. That brings us to item K, which is discussing establishment of a committee to determine the future of Indian shaped sculpture. George, you want to fire up and be on that?
Yeah, I'll be on it.
Okay. Can we get two other volunteers? I don't know if everybody will pop up if it wants here. Ben?
Sure, I will go ahead and be on that there with George.
Yeah, I'd do it, too. Melvin's on it.
Who wants it?
It doesn't matter.
I'll take it.
Wait.
So now we got everybody that wants to be on it.
I don't have to be on that, I was just volunteering because it's in Ward Three.
All right, that makes sense, George and George. All right, come on, give me one more person that's committed to it.
I'll take it.
George and George.
All right. Tom, you good with that? Melvin?
I don't care, that's fine.
All right, so we're going to do George, Ben, and Melvin. I would just ask that somebody make a motion to have Ben, George Capps, and Melvin Kerr on this committee. Tom?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, you need a second? And George?
A second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes, seven zero. That brings us to item L, which is considered amendment of ordinance number one zero zero nine dash twenty sixteen and one zero one two dash twenty sixteen pertaining to court costs and fees. Doug?
Mayor and council, about two years ago, we did a rewrite of several of the municipal court fines and court costs. And this ordinance tonight is a small amendment in just two little, kind of minor matters, but it's a, something that we need to get done. Dee, since she has come on board, has made an inquiry into lots of our processes and as she's done that, she's found there are several things that are in the books, sometimes that we're not doing and it makes sense not to do them. But we don't want to do something contrary to our ordinances. So what, what this ordinance amendment does is it changes Section One C, and hopefully your copies also show the strike through, it just strikes through the requirement that the city clerk report on a quarterly basis the credits and debits of that training fund. That's not something that's been done and it's not something that was thought by staff to be necessary. Second change is in Section Two of the ordinance, subsection B, where, as it's presently written, it requires requests by supervisors for their people to be receiving funds for this kind of training, to make those requests through, to the city council, through the city clerk. That, again, didn't seem like something that was required council action. And so it now reads that it should be made in writing to the city, to the city clerk directly. Those are the changes that we would recommend in this amendment.
Does anybody have any questions for Doug? Is there a recommendation from the council?
Ben? Sure, I would go ahead and make a motion here that we approve ordinance, their amending ordinances, ten oh nine dash twenty sixteen and ten twelve dash twenty sixteen of the city of Park City, Kansas pertaining to court costs and fees to be assessed in the municipal court of the city of Park City, Kansas, and repealing the originals of said ordinances.
Okay, John?
Second.
Okay, do you have that ordinance number?
One zero five three dash two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herron?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsetta?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
Randy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
And that ordinance passes, seven zero. That brings us to item M, which is considered amendment to the real estate purchase agreement with Kenneth Burke dated September nineteenth, 2018. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because the existing maintenance shop is in a superfund site, Kenneth wanted to make sure that all the applicable clearances environmental, environmentally have been taken care to his satisfaction. This has taken longer than what he anticipated. So he would like to, to give an extension to at least to February so that he can wrap that up. He thinks everything is going okay, but he'd like to get some stuff in writing from the feds and state if he can. And it looks like it may work out great with, with our new building, too, so.
Do you have an actual recommended date?
That it would, I think the agreement says February the twenty nineteen, is when we would close all the property.
John?
February twenty nineteen. It was nineteen.
February nineteenth.
Oh, nineteen, okay. Well, that is twenty nineteen.
I was trying to figure out. So I'll make a motion.
We had two nineteenths in there, I'm sorry.
Based on Jack's recommendation that we approve amending the purchase contract for sale of the city maintenance shop located at two hundred and fifty-third street to change the date of February nineteenth of twenty nineteen.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, seven zero. That brings us to item N, which is considered a weed barrier of rock beds for the police parking lot to be paid out of the 2018 budget. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this year, we were looking at trying to cut down some maintenance problems that we have around the new building. One was on the east parking lot. There was a strip of grass about like this that took a lot of handwork to deal with. Also, every time they want to address the issue with the grass, people had to back their cars out. Took a lot of staff time and stuff. The council at that time looked at doing the police department, there's a long section back in the police department at that time. I guess we didn't feel like that we necessarily may have the money to do that. So that portion wasn't done, but we did do the east side. Rethinking this issue, earlier this year, the council approved eleven thousand dollars for the park department to hire a additional winner, I mean, helper for the summer, and it was later in the year. For various reasons, we didn't use that money and that money is now available that could be used towards doing this. The same problem that existed on the east side of the building exists on the south side in the police department parking lot. They come out and the cars are all covered with grass and stuff and you have to ask them to move them. And it's a very small, very difficult piece of real estate there to mow. So that's why we're bringing it back for you to reconsider, since we have this eleven thousand to go towards it.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Jack? John?
So this is thirteen thousand. What was the difference?
Difference is two thousand.
Did I miss that? I'm sorry, did you say what that was?
Excuse me?
You have eleven thousand?
Yeah, eleven thousand from the personnel that we didn't hire.
Okay.
But I don't make two thousand. I think the original bid was more like fifteen, seventeen thousand.
It was, and that's why we punted it, because it came in too high.
Right.
And I think we're seeing a slight benefit just because of the season that we're in. We can probably get it done cheaper. And we can also look that we're going to save money on the labor hours spent doing this, so it would be a wise move for us.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid of thirteen thousand, twenty-three ninety-five cents to be paid out of the 2018 budget.
Okay, Tom?
I'll, I'll second it for discussion. I've got a question. If we're not doing any of the work?
No.
No, straight up.
Then what would, I mean, that's, what can we do it for?
Well, we'd have to drop all the other work that we've been, we've got to do, but, I mean, it's.
Well, you're talking about taking out, what, four inches of dirt grass and putting some weed barrier down and throwing a rock on it?
Right.
Okay.
And dealing with the sprinkler system as well.
Okay.
Yeah, you'd have to cut pipes and batch them off and cut the water off and.
Okay, yeah. Just asking.
We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, seven zero. That brings us to item O, which is considered the purchase of an electronic traffic citation system from Salute Technologies, Digiticket, along with Delta Interfaces for the Police Department's Record Management System from Interpol and for the Municipal Court Records Management System from Tyler Technologies. Chief Lawson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. The electronic traffic citation is something that we've looked at for a number of years here, and it's something that we have not pursued because we simply did not have the money available. We have a couple of videos, which I thought might help to explain the process of how these work. They're really short. And so I think I'll ask Jesse if he could just show both of those real quick and then I'll have a short presentation and answer any questions that you might have.
Saltes' mission is to partner with law enforcement to increase productivity and gain efficiencies through the use of mobile solutions. We do this by reducing ticket processing times, eliminating ticket errors, and improving the safety, security, and stability of ticketing data. Digiticket is two components that are configured to an agency's requirements. The first is software and hardware that is used in the field by officers to issue tickets. The second is a web application that provides management, reporting, and exporting tools. Using Digiticket, driver license information is quickly captured with a barcode or magnetic stripe reader or from a person and vehicle query of a state database. Citation information is easily completed and a uniform citation is printed on rugged thermal printers in a fraction of the time it takes for a handwritten ticket. Officers can upload ticket data electronically to Digiticket's web-based utilities, where it can be used for analysis and reporting to RMS and court systems. Digiticket can be used with existing laptops, tablets, scanners, or rugged handheld computers that include touchscreens, GPS, cameras, and cellular capability. Digiticket is the trusted e-citation solution for agencies such as the Kansas Highway Patrol, as well as police, sheriff, fire, and code enforcement agencies across the country. Saltes offers public safety agencies a stable software architecture, a wide selection of hardware, complete training programs, and industry-leading twenty-four-seven support. Electronic citation technology has been shown to pay for itself through increased productivity, safety, accuracy, and efficiency. The Digiticket solution can be purchased or used as a monthly service. The monthly service option requires no upfront fees, no long-term contract, and no limits to the number of users or citations written. To never write another ticket, call or visit Saltes Technologies online today.
Quality paperwork and processes are important to an efficient and smoothly-run court. Handwritten citations can create issues due to transcription errors or handwriting and Innovative Digiticket software by Saltes Technologies helps officers in courts reduce ticket processing times. By automating ticket writing and processing, Digiticket vastly reduces the chance of errors. Using Digiticket, officers can scan any driver's license to quickly capture the information. Citations are then quickly completed from a series of dropdown menus for maximum efficiency. And tickets can be printed directly from a Zebra Technologies thermal printer from the officer's vehicle. Citations are forwarded to a court management system in seconds. Using Digiticket, courts can manage the citation statutes, court dates, and docket loads. The entire process can take a few minutes from start to finish while keeping officers safe. ROI is excellent as Digiticket removes errors and reduces processing time. To learn more about Digiticket, contact Saltes Technologies today.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. And of course, that's kind of a commercial for the company, obviously, but we've spent a lot of time looking at different technologies that are out there. The generic term for this is e-citation or electronic citation, the process. It's something that's being done widely. Virtually all of the agencies of our size, cities of our size around us and larger are all using electronic citations and most of them have already been using it for a number of years. Just to kind of explain the process to you, the way it works now, when an officer stops a car, we've got a traffic ticket, it's got carbonless copies, five copies on there, they're handwriting all this information on there. They do the best they can to write legibly, you know, but you've got to press pretty hard to get through five copies. And sometimes that information doesn't get copied down correctly, even though, you know, they make every effort to be as correct as possible. We have some problems with legibility. In fact, just an example, I was here about a month ago and after hours, someone walked in the front door here and they were here for court. And it was a, you know, it was an off night and the ticket that they had had the wrong, what looked like the wrong date on it. It was, just didn't copy through correctly. So the person showed up thinking they had court. This is one example, and there's many, many that I could give you about legibility and handwriting. But beyond that, probably the bigger issue is we are entering data three different times. The officer's entering the data in the traffic ticket when they're riding it out. They give those tickets to our records personnel. They are retyping all that information into the police department database. And then we forward those same tickets to the court and the court clerks are re-entering that same data again a third time. And of course, every time you enter that, there's another opportunity for, for error, not to mention the redundancy that's involved. The electronic citation process, it does speed up the process for the officers that are on the street, but that's really not the main purpose of it. The main purpose is to reduce the redundancy and also it's going to help our process with court immensely, where we can, as soon as the officer's done with issuing the ticket, that information is uploaded wirelessly to the cloud and it's then available to the court. So let's say someone gets a traffic ticket today and they want to pay that right away. This, this happens, not uncommon, they walk in here to City Hall and the court clerk may not have the ticket for two or three days because the officer has to turn that in, the court clerk has to copy it, also the, the police records has to copy it. And so this way, the information is virtually available instantly to the court. uh, instantly to the court. So it speeds up the process for the public as well as, uh, for the police officers. We looked at, again, a number of vendors. Uh, the one that I presented to you in this packet is, uh, Digiticket is a brand name. They are the most commonly used, uh, throughout the state of Kansas. They're on the state contract. Uh, Kansas Highway Patrol uses them, and because they're on the state contract, we're guaranteed to receive the lowest price. Uh, that's one reason that they're so widely used, is because the price is guaranteed. The information that I presented to you, uh, takes two different forms. One is what they call Digiticket as a Service, which is basically a lease program. Uh, the other is to purchase the product. Uh, I know that there's really been a desire on the part of the council to pay for things when we can and not have to have a lot of, reduce the amount of ongoing payments that we have to have. Uh, as I said in the packet here, it doesn't take a lot of math to figure out, if you look at the price, about two-point-nine years' worth of lease payments would equal the amount of the purchase price. So really, the only reason, if we decided to proceed with this, the only reason to go with the lease, excuse me, would be to not have to, uh, put the money upfront. A lot of governing bodies don't have the money or want to spend the money upfront, which I understand. Uh, this is something, again, that is one of the remaining pieces in the police department that is something I feel like we need to move forward with to bring us into the twenty-first century, uh, to improve our processes and make us more, uh, efficient in what we do. We wouldn't have these funds available, again, if, uh, had it not been for the shortage of personnel that we've had throughout the year. But with the availability of that unspent money, that makes this, uh, possible, if you choose to go forward with it. So with, uh, that being said, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief? John?
Uh, this may be more directed at the attorney, too, but is it possible to add, like, an administrative fee on citations that would possibly, like, fund this software and...
There is a technology fee right now that's part of the court costs. That's, and it would be up to the council, but that's something that, you know, maybe you would want to consider revising that fee. I think there's been a desire on the part of staff to, to look at that again and see where we stand in comparison to other municipalities around us, but currently, there is a technology fee, which I don't... And this would be a question for DE, but, uh, not to put you on the spot, but I don't know how that's accounted for or if it has been, um, specifically set aside into a fund.
I guess my curious, I mean, I, I'm totally supportive of this, and I, I mean, I'm, I'm for doing it, but I would say, you know, in other years where we're funding having this system, I think it would be prudent for us to maybe, you know, obviously, we're gonna be forecasting citations, but, you know, determine, you know, what's a close number to where we can, I mean, fund the upkeep of or the annual fee of it through, through the citations, since that's what it's used for.
Now, I would, I would just want to say that I'd be more than happy to, to have us look at that and bring that, but I just want to remind the council, the last time I brought court costs and fees, it was very contentious about no desire to increase it and keep penalizing people more and more, and we had a pretty healthy argument over that and struggled just to get slight increases. So, I mean, if, 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 if the tone of the council is we want to be aggressive to try to offset some of these costs that we're, we're incurring, I'd love to bring that back to the council.
And, and I agree, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I, I, these are expensive, but, um, let's just face it, this is a user fee. I mean, we either put it back on the backs of all the citizens or on the people that are using it. And that's what I'm saying, is, I get it, getting into it is expensive, and that's something that we're gonna have to foot the bill, but, I mean, thi- this is something that throughout the year, we talk about the middle levy when the budget's coming up, but every night is a budget night, and all the money we're spending is coming out of that budget, and that's what I'm saying is, by doing that, it becomes a user fee. So, nobody wants the user fee, I get that, but that's actually what it is.
Presently, it's a twelve-dollar technology fee. It's in that ordinance that you amended earlier in the first section of it.
Chief, did you have anything? I'm sorry, I mean, to cut you off.
Uh, just one thing, and that was the, the ongoing cost. The lease payment, if it was leased, would be eighty-seven forty-eight, eight thousand seven hundred forty-eight per year. If it's purchased, the total, there's a, it's split up into three pieces, but the total is, uh, roughly thirty-eight hundred per year.
Thanks, Chief. Mal?
I seen on your, uh, video there, it said something about code enforcement. Was that? You plan on bringing those guys on, too?
Uh, yes.
Later on, maybe?
Yes, sir, that's a good question. Thank you for bringing that up. The, uh, in the quote that they gave us, they did not include that. It is something that could be done at an additional cost. It would involve, uh, just paying an additional license fee.
And, and I, you see, it comes out of the police budget there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Well, I missed something. I thought maybe John was touching on, he was talking about technology fees and stuff. Uh, we're actually, the police department's actually buying something here that's gonna be a labor saver for the court. They don't have to retype something, and they're not doing any kind of investment into it. And so I don't think we're looking at increasing any prices, but, but there's some cost sharing that ought to happen there because of the benefit. And I thought that's where John was headed, but I don't think we got there. I just wanted to throw that out. This police department's buying something that's gonna help the courts.
Ben?
I guess what I'm understanding then from, uh, that is that a suggestion that the court would help pay, the court would help pay some of the costs for this on licensing there. Um, I would tend to agree with John that I'd be in favor of maybe looking at our structure there on that, because i- it's like anything, uh, the line of business I do, the people that use insurance more deal with the pricing more. Um, and so I would, I would very much be in favor of looking at that for come time there, but I do appreciate the, uh, the presentation that said, "I would like to make a motion here for the purchase of an electronic traffic citation system from Salta's Technologies, for Digiticket, along with the data interfaces for the police department records management system from Interpol and for the municipal court records management system from Tyler Technologies."
At a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars?
Correct, yes.
And then also, for associated costs, not to exceed two thousand five hundred, and the data face, interface for the municipal court records management system from Tyler Technology in code at no co- at a cost not to exceed four thousand dollars, for a total expenditure not to exceed thirty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars?
That is correct.
That's what I thought I heard.
That's exactly what you heard.
Okay. Sometimes I'm slow. George?
I'll second that.
Tom?
I was gonna second it, but I do have a comment. Uh, every time we spend these dollars, this is carry forward we're spending, so just keep that in mind.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item P, which is consider the purchase of an electronic fingerprinting system in municipal court. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in your packet also. This is really something that is for, uh, the court more so from the, than for the police department, although we're obviously, uh, it's, well, obviously, it is a benefit to both the court and the police department. And we all serve in the criminal justice system, so, uh, it would benefit the city and, and the citizens as well. Uh, there's a brochure that's on your screen there, which I know it's kind of a complicated, you know, diagram of the whole thing, but I thought that you might want to see, uh, a picture of the, the thing that you're actually voting on tonight. Uh, what the law requires is that, uh, in municipal court, the court has to submit fingerprints to the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for any person who's convicted of a Class A or a Class B misdemeanor. Those are the higher, higher classes of misdemeanors. And then if it's a Class C misdemeanor, uh, any assault. So those have to be submitted to the, to the Kansas Bureau of Investigation. The process that has been followed for the last number of years uh, is that the city has hired private security to come in to court and provide those fingerprinting services. The Kansas Bureau of Investigation has, uh, rejected quite a few fingerprint card cards back to the court because the quality of the fingerprints was not acceptable. Uh, there's a certain amount of an art to the process of taking ink and paper fingerprints. Uh, it's kind of old technology now, but the, uh, security provides this, and, and not to criticize the security, but the turnover has been a problem sometimes, and so they get someone who comes in and learns to do the process, and then that person's gone, and so they have to find another person who either knows it or else, or else can be trained to do it. In addition, uh, the ink and paper fingerprints end up causing a backlog. They don't get into the system right away. So this is something that affects the criminal justice system, and I'll just give an example of that. If someone here in Park City, uh, has a conviction for, and I'll just use the example of domestic violence, uh, they, they are fingerprinting, those fingerprints are put into the system. Uh, there's also an electronic disposition that is required to be sent to the state, which is entered into the computer system. Now, one, one area, and I'm just using this as an example, because there's, there's many that I could pick, but I thought this was, uh, relevant. Someone goes down to buy a gun, and when they buy a gun, as you know, if they buy it from a federal licensed dealer, uh, they have to go through the background check process. They will check, one thing that would disqualify a person from, uh, buying a firearm would be a conviction for domestic violence. If those, uh, or if that information was not submitted in a timely manner to the state's database, that person could go down and buy a gun, and it wouldn't show up on the background check because it's being held up, uh, by fingerprints being delayed because they're tied together. Usually, it's a, a printed form, it's a disposition, you know, the conviction of their crime, and then a ink and paper fingerprint card that gets attached, and those get backlogged at the KPI, because they have to scan those things. What they're doing is actually converting the ink and paper that we send them in a fingerprint card. They're scanning that and converting that to what this instrument here does directly, which is creating electronic fingerprint. So this is the newer process. The Sedgwick County Jail has had this type of system for, uh, just about as long as I can remember. That's, that's how far back it goes. So it would speed up the process for those who are doing the fingerprinting here. I feel like that it would speed up the process enough to where we could have our police officers go back to doing the fingerprinting, which is what we used to do, uh, rather than hiring the private security to do it. That would free up some money, because, uh, they should be providing the security services out in the hallway, which we haven't gotten around to instituting yet, and we really need to, to do that. But that would help to support that financially. Uh, we wouldn't be paying for them to do fingerprints, plus providing security out in the hallway, which is actually, was in the budget for this year, but it, it instituted. So I'm kind of going around the circles here, but, uh, trying to explain the process of how it would save us time, how it would save us money, and then also how it would improve the process of getting this information into the system, which that overall benefits everyone, uh, if we have the proper records at the state level of criminal convictions, so that it protects people. And that information is available to the courts and to law enforcement officers on the street. So, what I presented to you here is, uh, there's not a lot of choices when it comes to this, uh, equipment, so... And this one is on the state contract. In fact, it's recommended by the Kansas Bureau of Investigation. Very standard piece of equipment. Uh, you can't go to Walmart and buy these, you know? Uh, it's probably why they're so expensive, to be honest with you. But it is a high-tech piece of equipment. It would position us for the future, though, uh, to have what we need for many, many years to come. Not only does it provide this service for the courts and the criminal justice system, but it would benefit the police department in this, in this way. We get someone who we have in custody, maybe they're not going to jail yet, but we have them in custody, and we don't know exactly who they are. Frankly, this happens all the time. Uh, you can imagine, if you had a warrant for, let's say, robbery, and the police stop you, uh, and you know you've got a warrant, are you going to say, "I'm John Doe"? You know, I mean, well, you know that they've got the information, and so they're gonna find the warrant, so they give us a false name, and they hide their identification and so forth. Uh, this would allow us to bring that person here to the, to the building and scan their fingerprints. If they're in the system, then we could identify who they were. That's really just a side benefit, though. Uh, the main benefit is to the court. So, with that, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. George?
Where's the money coming from for this?
What I'm proposing is, the police department is where the excess money is, uh, because of our shortage of personnel again this year. Uh, we have the funds available in the police budget. That's why I'm recommending that we buy it from the police budget.
Okay. Well, I'll move, we have, we approve the purchase of an electronic fingerprinting system from IDE MIA for a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
George, do you want to second for discussion?
I'll just go ahead and second it. Um, and moving forward, I think it's a vital part of the police department in which you guys need to do your job, the efficiency of the courts, but also your officers and, and how fast this is gonna move you along in doing your work. So I firmly support that, and I will second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Mayor.
I would just like to take the opportunity to thank the police department. As you can see, the police department and the court have worked hand in hand on this, and they've taken a lead role, which has really worked well, and it's a, a really prime opportunity to say how our departments do work together, and we work as a team, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Last, we'll just start with, uh, governing body reports, and start with you.
I just want to say, um, congratulations to Shane Alexander. I know he's already left, but, um, we didn't, I didn't get a chance to tell him, "Congratulations." Um, it's exciting, or I'm glad to know that whether they're on duty or off duty, they're always wearing the badge and, um, willing to step in when needed. Um, and then on the Gingerbread House co- um, competition, um, I'm, I'm thankful to Ben for suggesting this and getting it, um, up and going, and I'm glad to see that there was several kids that participate this year, so hopefully, you get out and more and more kids will start getting involved in, in some events that we have out here. And then I want to just tell everybody, um, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
George?
Well, I, yeah, I, I, I think it's very important that officers be recognized for what they do. It goes back to a sore spot with me when I see the, the salute the badge deal, where that only concerns two agencies in this, in this county, and, you know, we've got Troop F of the Highway Patrol, we got Wichita State, uh, we got several pretty good-sized law enforcement agencies here in the county, and, and I just, uh, you know, I, I got a little problem with that, uh, 'cause there's, there's officers all over doing, doing great things. And, uh, one thing that I've noticed, that I've, I, just a thought, is, and I've done it, I, I've traveled, I've taken my dog with me, and I've noticed all kinds of people are... I've taken my dog with me, and I've noticed all kinds of people are taking their dogs. You know, dogs has moved out of the backyard, they've moved into the houses, into the bedrooms. But, you know, people look for places when they're traveling for places that's got dog parks. And I think it'd be great if we got a dog park in this town. I see people doing a quick trip in different places with their dogs out there relieving themselves and stuff. But I think, you know, when I travel with mine, when I have, I've looked for places that have the dog parks and I think something like that would be a nice addition to this city. I think it would help bring people in off the highway. And other than that, wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
I just wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Same here, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and so ahead. Ben?
Yeah, I wanted to first off, again, say thank you to Pride for helping out this year with the gingerbread house competition. They are a huge benefit to our city and our community and all that they do, and so thank you to them for all that they do. Secondly, finishing first year on the council's been fun. I appreciated working with each one here on the council over this year, learning a lot and for their patience with me. But it's also been a, it's been a different type of year. Many of us in here, several of us in here on the council and in staff have dealt with personal tragedies that, that have come sometimes just out of nowhere. And so life doesn't always go the way that we want them to go and that's, that's definitely very sure. And as we get closer to Christmas, it's a time when people often have a hard time dealing with the changes that take place during a timeframe. And I want to encourage anyone out there that is struggling with those feelings of hurt and such to reach out to someone for help, to reach out to others to make sure that it's something that we all struggle with at times. But don't, don't go through this holiday season, don't go through this time of year so neglected and so defeated that you can't reach out to someone. There's resources there available. But again, as we move forward into 2019, 2018 has sure changed a lot of our lives and not how we wanted always, but, but at the same time, we've been able to draw strength from each other and from various others. And so for that, I'm very appreciative. But again, reach out and I do want to say Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and we will see you back here in 2019.
George?
Yeah, kudos to Ben on the bread thing, house thing. That was, that was really neat to see. I appreciate all the support that everybody gave, the young individuals who came up and actually provided the houses for us to look at. I haven't seen anything like that since I was 10, 11 years old. We had one in our high, our actual grade school. But also, as Ben was saying about this time of year, you know, for me, it's about, it's about celebration, it's about celebrating the birth of our Lord and Savior. It's also about family, getting together with families. A lot of times, we'll see a family member we haven't seen in years. Only time we see them is on Christmas or New Year. So it's about reconnecting with them, seeing what's going on with them. But if you, if you have elderly people that live by themselves, go over and check on them and see how they're doing, make it a thing to go over and just say, "Hi, you know, I care about you, Merry Christmas." Do something with them. But for me, it's about serving others and just being part of that. And I wanted to thank Ben for his first year and all that he's contributed to and also Brandy as well. I look forward to 2019. But also the convos that we have with Ben, we're seeing a renewed interest in that where people are actually coming out and they're voicing their concerns or their opinions at the donut place over here. So we, we need that, we need to get filter about what's going on in the city. A lot of times, people won't come here in this setting, but they'll go to the donut place and share with us what some of their needs or concerns are. So feel free to do that as we continue to 2019. Also wanted to say with our city administrator search, we've got some positive responses back on that, some pretty good applicants so far that we'll be looking at, so that's moving along. So I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Don't have anything else, say Merry Christmas and see you next year.
Okay. We'll make a motion, we adjourn. I'll go to second it. Motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes seven zero.